And the last few weeks I've had to sign in, I shouldn't have to keep signing in.
This evening's meeting of the Auburn School Committee, we'll begin this meeting with a pledge of allegiance, please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And introductions, Adam, we're gonna start with you.
Adam Hanson, business manager.
Shelly McClellan, Assistant Superintendent.
Alfreda Fornia, Ward Four, Mayor's Representative.
Anne Poisson, Ward Five.
Eric Claudio, at large.
Katie Gronin, Superintendent.
Tom Kendall, Ward Three.
Bonnie Hayes, Ward Two.
Kate Fontaine, at large.
Bob Neely, Ward One.
And Jenna is due, she has her son's practice.
Yeah, she was in the parking garage, so she should be coming any second.
She'll be in shortly. Communications, has anyone received communication they'd like to share with the committee since our last meeting?
I have, I have a, actually it was in the newspaper. It was concerning, number one, how we become number one on it, and it was written by Suzanne and John Ploard on it, and they were very upset that our school system was no longer number one in their, in their view on it. And I did a little digging, and with the help of, of the superintendent, but the deal is that we probably will never be number one because we have a mobility factor, we have free and reduced lunch factor that is very high, we're a service center on it, so we have a lot of things that are going, so we'll never be a Yarmouth or a Falmouth, but we will be the best in our class, and that will be Portland and Sanford and Bitterford, and the towns that are service centers that have high mobility rates and that have high free and reduced lunch rates on it. So we can, we're gonna strive to do our dandus to be number one in our class, but we're never, never gonna be a Yarmouth or a Cape Elizabeth, never on it, because of the mobility and the free and reduced lunch factor. Those are the two primary factors that are going to hold us back. Thank you, Tom.
I'd echo that only in that if you consider demographics, now call that demographics as you look at what the communities, various communities are made up of, if you compare like demographics, I think you'll find we do quite well. I will echo the fact that I think we prepare those students who are prepared to be educated, I think we prepare them as well as any school prepares them.
We do.
So they have that opportunity that anyone would have anywhere in the state, so I feel very confident that we're doing an excellent job in that regard.
Just so that everybody realizes that I ran it by Katie, the superintendent, she did not lead me by my nose to, to look at this, and we had a discussion over this, so.
Yes.
I didn't talk to Katie, but I did go out on the website for the, that evaluated the high school, because I know Sue and John personally, and I was a little bit upset about their letter to the editor, and in looking at the website, I recognized, I believe there were five criteria that they collected data for, and in our particular situation, they only found data for one of those categories. Is that correct? I mean, that's the way I read it, so if you looked at the listing, they even had a zero next to Lewiston, so we were, we're on a website, a national website, but we're not, it wasn't a complete evaluation, and so I feel very concerned about that, and so do Sue and John, I did talk to them, and they had seen the rating out on Zillow, which is a real estate website, so if you wanna move to Akron, Ohio, you can pull it up and you can see how they evaluate their schools. Well, it's not fair if everybody's not evaluated the same, and I don't know if there's anything that can be done about it from our side, that was the biggest concern.
I mean, they do ask you, you can sign up, it's money, right, I mean, these are, these are things that, it's like a Yelp or, you know, it's similar to my, my daughter works for hotel, and they push for people to rate their hotel. So, like, I had a parent call me once concerned about a rating, and I said, "Well, if you look at all the ratings though, they're, out of the 10 ratings, four people gave it a five star, two people gave it a two star, well, when you average the stars, it brings it down." So it's almost like when you're rating a restaurant or you're rating a thing, and then, like you said, the categories, I was talking to Bonnie about this, you know, AP classes, certain high schools, you know, offer a certain number of AP classes, can, you know, if we offered that same number of AP classes, I don't know what our enrollment would be for those classes, so you kinda have to weigh out, what are they reporting, what are we reporting, but Scott and Eren, I talked about it, you know, we could sign up, we could get the data, we could, we could, right, and pay for it.
Pay.
Yeah, so I think it's something definitely, like you said, yeah.
And the other part of-
And the ratings on it, you have to look, some, we get high ratings from, from people as well.
The other part of the Zillow thing is that, for some reason, some schools are rated in our district and some aren't, so my thought being is that Fairview's got a heck of a PR people, person over there, because they answer the questions, they put it out there, and they get a six, so if I'm looking for a home in Auburn, I'm gonna check out Fairview, because all of a sudden, they got a six and everybody else is a zero or a one, so they've, they've got a heck of a PR department going on over, good for Celeste, but it's very nerve-wracking because people go to these sites and they take it as gospel truth, and there's a lot more going into it besides test scores, assessment scores on it, it's a whole wealth of things that go in, and unless we have a PR person in our system that can do this for us and other things, then we're, we're gonna suffer the consequences, if there are any consequences. Thank you.
Anyone else comment?
The only other communication I would add is, we had our first early release last week for grades K-12, and it went very well from checking in with the administrators, Scott is here. We did, I checked with community, if you, I had put that out to all of you, there were community options available, the community was really great about stepping up and offering things, so at the roller drum, we had about 20 students participate, the Boys and Girls Club had an increase in their enrollment, about 13 that they normally have, the library didn't see a whole lot of increase, the rec department had Hasty, and their gym ended up being closed, but they had Ingersoll open, and they had maybe three or four students, and no, no one went to the Norway Savings Arena, but it doesn't mean that when it gets a little colder, and people are looking for some different opportunities, so there's, they're continuing to be open. It was interesting, we did get a call from the trampoline place in Lewiston and said, "We'd be open too, would you be willing to transport students over to us," and right now, we're not prepared for that. It's bad enough I put a lot of stress on transportation to transport this time for our, so we're gonna watch numbers, make sure that, and I think the community people were saying, "We need to do a better job advertising as well, so that people can see us as an option." But I think first time around, I didn't hear from any parents, I don't think, Scott, you heard from a lot of parents, Bob Griffin was happily surprised that he didn't, you know, things went well, so, so far, you know, first one down.
And actually, the early release, that was part of our plan in our task force that we had a year ago, that what we weren't going to, we were asked not to dump students on the streets an hour earlier, so what we did was, you guys did a great job in finding places for them, and you need to be applauded for that. So there were no kids in doubles, in double study halls, back-to-back study halls?
Not that we're aware of, and Scott, you were pleasantly, halls were pretty clear, you had a few kids in the library, take advantage of that, so we offered, if students needed to stay, they could stay.
I, I read on one of the Facebook things that there was a student that had back-to-back study halls.
And we verified that, that probably did not occur.
That was not true.
And I think Scott reminded people, this is, your 80-minute classes are 50 minutes, so, you know, they still should be instructing at the same level.
Right.
So.
Thank you. And just to add in, I was happy to see that I got, I'm guessing every parent of a high school student got a letter in the mail, and it asked you to identify, will your children be at home supervised, are they gonna be home unsupervised, or attending one of the things, I thought that was a smart thing that the school did, just get an over idea, and to remind the parents that their children will be getting out of school early.
And seventh and eighth, we really pushed to have a response from every parent, I said, "It's like a field trip, you know, we wanna make sure we know where they're going." High school, they're a little bit older, so they were really checking hard on their ninth graders especially, but yes, doing a push to make sure everybody knew where they were going.
I have a, I have a seventh grader, and Ben hadn't, my son hadn't gotten the paperwork, and he got a robo-call, and he, we went downstairs that night and filled it out, so got it from Scott.
There you go.
So, good job.
Good teamwork between Bob Griffin and Scott and Eren, they were, they were talking to make sure everybody was on the same page and getting the same information.
I think you guys did a great job, good, good job in getting everybody organized.
And we appreciate the community members, the community organizations really stepped up, so kudos to them as well.
Great. All right, moving on, the consent agenda for this evening is the approval of this agenda and the approval of the minutes of our September 5th meeting, do I have a motion to approve? It actually includes the addendum of new teacher, special added EL, so if you, we are approving that as well.
So moved.
Second?
Second. Second.
There we go, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Thank you very much. All of participation? Yes, right up to the mic, name and address. You have options, do you?
Oh, yes.
Oh, great. Bring the mic so we can hear, so everyone can hear you.
I'll use the polite one, Marguerite Tucker, Ellybet Six Rosewood Road, and I have a few questions for the committee. When you decided to go with Power School Pro, what was your basic factor for going with this program, and where did you do your research, because I'm not able to find any?
So you're talking, okay, so the reporting, we had had Power School, so we always had used it, so when teachers were discussing which platform, that was a platform we were familiar with, and the other one synergy, it would've been a whole big learning curve rather than a small learning curve around Power School, so it's something we were used to, and Shelly, do you know if they looked at other ones specifically? That was the one most people wanted to go to, because we were most familiar with it, and we had used it.
Evidence, was it, did they say that they were better than traditional schooling, or, I mean, better than other programs, or, you know, I'm not seeing any support either way for that.
Yeah, so Power School's just our reporting platform, it's where the grades are put in, and we use Power School for our attendance, all of the attendance work.
So it's not a curriculum?
No, 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 no.
Okay.
And when I go over workshops, we're gonna be going over Power School, so you'll see a lot of what the kids are seeing and so forth, okay?
And, and actually with Power School, it was part of the task force charge that we had from, right from the beginning, was that we needed to look at grading, and we needed to look at something other than in Power, because we felt, the parents, parents in general felt that there was a lot of work to, to look at in Power, so that's why we went to Power School Plus, so that we could, everybody could look, everybody would be on the same page, and that would be a result of the task force.
And from a parent perspective, in case you're not familiar, but as a parent, I have the app on my phone, so if my daughter is late for school, 'cause she has her license, or if she leaves school early, I get a notification, or I can see, as soon as her test is graded, I get a notification, so it's really nice from a parent's perspective, because my daughter doesn't skip school, but if she's tardy, it will say, "Grace is March late for school," and I call the school and say, you know, "Is Grace in class?" So it's very nice from a parent's perspective.
I've gotten calls before saying that she skips school, and I'm going, "Oh, really?" Call her up on her phone, and she says, "No, I'm right here, I'm in school," and got missed.
Yes, that's why we have it, so you can be alert and check in on it, yeah, yeah.
Can I go onto the school's website and sign up as, as a grandparent as well as a parent, or?
Just check with your principal and your teacher, they can help you.
Five different ones.
I don't think there's a central-
No?
But I know how to reach you, we'll, we'll connect.
The other problem I think I have, well, I don't think I know, it is a problem, last week, an incident took place on the school bus, I was looking up the school bus rules, and I couldn't get them on the Auburn School Department's website, I don't know why they're not there, but I couldn't find them. So, to make it really quick, last year, one of my grandsons decided to punch somebody out on the bus, and I supported that principal, win her decision to suspend him for five days, even though the mother begged me, and I mean begged me, to take him to school, I would not. This year, my four-year-old granddaughter, who was pre-K, has been punched in the face, the child has not been suspended, and she's gone on to punch the second child in the face. I don't know if there's a difference in policy, or what the issue is.
Be in touch.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, close public participation, I don't see anyone else in the audience. Moving forward, planning and development, we're gonna get an update on the summer projects that Billy was so lucky to get done in this humid weather.
Yes, so Adam and Billy, Billy's gonna come up to the mic in case there are questions, and Adam's put a presentation together, so as you know, with your capital improvement program, many, many projects are done in the summer, and a lot was done this summer, as well, as a matter of fact, as Adam put it together, you know, you talk about them individually, and then when you put them all together, you should be very proud of, a lot of work was done this summer.
When you put them together, you realize how much we were able to get done, so come on up, Billy, don't be shy.
That's right.
Billy's gonna bring his expertise to this.
I think he's just tired from all the summer projects.
I think that's probably very true. So we did have a very successful summer in getting some projects done, and please jump in with any questions you have as we go through this. So I just put the schools alphabetically, not in order of any importance, so we replaced quarry tile at Auburn Middle School in the bathroom, in the corridor by the cafeteria, and in the kitchen, and this tile replaced the original 1980 floor tile, and it looks great.
Why was there need to replace it?
It was old.
Cracking, falling apart, there was many pieces that had been repaired, with being an old tile, you couldn't get the same thickness or the same style, so there was different elevations and things like that. In the kitchen, it was very bad, because it was a little bit different type of tile, it was more the, I think, one-by-one squares, and there was many areas that were very soft, that just kinda like floating, there, there wasn't any glue holding, or cement holding them down anymore.
Adam, is this why there were a lack of stalls at one point in a couple bathrooms at the middle school?
This is why, yes.
Okay.
What's that, I'm sorry?
Lack of stalls, I had a parent ask me why there are no stalls in the restrooms.
We have them, we just have to install, they were ordered later in the summer, and they came, I think, the first week of September, so they'll be installed very soon.
And that's why I assumed it was a project, I said, "Contact the principal of the school," so, okay, perfect.
It was decided to replace those also, because they were the same age, they'd served their time, it was, it would be a good time to replace them while we did the floor, they had to come down for the floor anyhow, so.
Yeah, I, I believe those particular stalls were on our list for next summer, but since we were in there anyway, it made more sense to just go ahead and do them while we were in there, so. East Auburn, we replaced carpet through, and older tile throughout the entire building, with the exception of, I think, the library and a few of the classrooms maybe.
Library and the, some of the restrooms that were done a couple years ago.
Yeah, this is one of the last schools to get the tile, all the other schools, matter of fact, I think they were waiting, "When do, when do we get our tile?" type of thing, and it does make it so much fresher.
If you go in there, it looks like a totally new building, it really pops, it's really nice.
It really does, it looks really great, Sue Doris brought me through it, and it looks beautiful, it looks like a new school.
This is the tail end of us replacing, our commitment to replace a lot of the rug with tile in the classrooms, and this is the last school.
You can also see, there just in the corner, one of the new entry mats, we are starting to put in entry mats that are built in, rather than the old rugs that get scrunched up and people can trip over them, so, you know, we think it's a great improvement, so that'll be on our radar as we move forward.
How do those get cleaned?
Vacuum.
Yeah, you can vacuum.
Just vacuum.
It's the type of thing, if you walk into like a Best Buy or places like that, you'll notice, it's sorta like carpet, but it's built right in, and that's, that's sorta where things are trending, so we took advantage of that at East Auburn this summer.
Their square section is just like the tiles, so there's one, if, if the center area gets damaged, you can replace just that.
Also at East Auburn, and this was part of our performance contract with Siemens, the big old beast of a boiler has been replaced with three propane boilers that you can see there, and we also have upgraded system controls in the building, courtesy of the Siemens project.
Is, is this like we saw in Massachusetts where it cycles, there, you really only need two at any one time, pretty much?
These are very, very efficient, the, as you see the piping above them, that's all plastic, that includes the exhaust, intake and exhaust, so it's very efficient, each boiler has, each unit has two burners in it, so there's actually six burners there, so it can cycle down to just one if it's a day like today, and you want just a little bit of heat to take a little bit of chill off, or all six can run at the same time, they will cycle in a session, you know, through a cycle, so that one isn't running all the time.
Did they fire them up today, Billy?
Yeah, they, they started them up today, I, I assumed they're going all set, I didn't hear any feedback, but I was there when the third one was started to be programmed, so.
Nice.
Here's one I think you all know about already, the resurfacing of the EL track that was done early in the summer. Also part of the performance contract is a new natural gas boiler at Fairview, so we had two boilers there, only one of which was functional, we now have this new boiler and the other functional boiler as a backup.
So this will provide consistent heat for all the classrooms, probably, would that help that problem?
This, this boiler primarily will heat the, what we call the 95 section, was the two-story section out back, the library, the art room, and beyond, the gymnasium and that section, the, the boiler that was, that, that one replaced had a cracked section in it, so you only had one boiler for that area, which was in only about an eight or 10-year-old boiler, but this one will be the primary now with the other one being a backup. If you look at the roof, you see all kinds of little units on the roof in the single-story section, those are individual classroom heaters, so that, they take care of that section, this will take care of the two-story section.
Is that efficient?
Is this one efficient?
All of those little heaters on the top of the building?
Oh, yeah.
And they're all natural gas on the top of the building, too?
Yeah.
So Fairview, knock on wood, it's got a backup boiler, and a brand-new boiler, and it's got all the other boilers, right?
Right. These rooftop units actually help these, that big boiler there and the other backup boiler, it'll give it longevity, because before, these used to heat the whole thing, the whole building, so now those smaller units heat individually, these things will last a very long time.
It's hard when you have a building that's built for many years, and then you add on to it, and you just, when you add on to it, you really need to add on to this stuff, too.
Yep, correct.
Also at Fairview, there was a lot of paving and ground improvements, and I think Billy can probably explain what we did there.
This leads up to the playground out back, and if you've been there, you can see the basketball hoop in the upper right-hand corner, it leads to that little basketball courtyard. Before, it was about a four-foot paved path up through there, with a lot of erosion on both sides, it was hard to not have the erosion, they like us to plow that in the wintertime so they can get to the basketball court, have some hard space in the winter, so it really got tore up a lot from the vehicles that have to go up in there. So we widened the road to the basketball hoop, and we, as you can see, the, where the rocks and the yellow posts are, that's drainage to help with the future, or prevent future erosion, and that also turns around and goes down the hill towards the kindergarten area.
Does that plow go to, is that plowed so the kids can use the trail to get onto Fairview Court, or whatever it is?
No, we don't go that far. Yeah.
We had roof replacement at three of our buildings, the one you're seeing here is Sherwood Heights, that was the big one, it's quite a sprawl up there, and we also had smaller projects at Walton and at Billy's building on Industry Ave, and these were all based on a study that was done for us a couple years ago by G and E Roofing, so we took that study and used that to determine the work that we would have done this summer.
Is that rubber membrane?
Yes. This roofing project here on, there was two pods that were completed at Sherwood Heights, and both the pods had drainage issues, there was only one drain per pod, and the taper of the roof wasn't very good, so after a rainstorm, two-thirds of that roof would remain a puddle for several days until it evaporated, so extra drains were put in to help that, and the taper of the roof in some areas was brought up almost 10 inches to get a better taper to the drains, so it's, was improved dramatically.
So those are the units like Fairview has on there?
Yes, those are individual classrooms underneath there.
Sherwood Heights, one of the smaller additions, but one I think people are most excited about, those are four new parking spaces over there, that we did at the same time as we were doing some repaving of the front loop, and that was a great idea on Billy's part, and I think everyone's pretty happy about that.
I have, I have used that parking, it's very helpful.
I can't take credit for it, it was Kim's idea, I just pushed it forward.
It's very helpful.
Great idea by Kim.
Yes.
Walton Kitchen Equipment, we had some big upgrades over there this summer, the two biggest ones being a new walk-in cooler and freezer that you can see there on the right, and that was quite a bit of work to get that all set up, it has a double entrance, there's a door entering into each side, the cooler side and the freezer side, and then what you're seeing on the left is a new tilting kettle that replaced, I would say, a very vintage unit, that was probably three times the size at least, took up that whole area in that picture, so these are some upgrades that Paula and her staff were excited about over at Walton.
Adam, what is that for?
That'll cook pasta, huge, huge orders of pasta and stuff like that.
Thanks.
You thinking about food, yeah?
Yeah, I'm eating right now, I'm hungry.
She has a snack, so.
This is Washburn, this is the play area in back at the school, and you can see in the back, the new, where it's been newly paved, that was quite eroded and cracked back there, so it's looking much better, and you can almost see behind that, I don't even know what you call that, it's not a basketball hoop, but directly behind that, you can see some new drainage, some new rocks, a drainage area that they improved at the same time that they were doing that project, it's gonna help drain that area better than it was before.
Tether ball.
Could you what?
The tether ball, isn't it?
You had to stop somewhere, that's continual all the way to, actually, to the road, to the parking lot.
So I drive over that?
Oh, yeah, yeah. That used to be where the second trailer sat, and being a playground, it doesn't have a lot of good gravel underneath it, so when the trailer went in and came out, it tore up the gravel a little bit, so that's why the repair was.
So that's right down there on the right, right, that I'm looking at?
Yes.
If you went over there now, you'd see the ramp has been put back that leads- If you went over there now, you'd see the ramp has been put back that leads to those doors.
And I did ask Andrew about, remember Washburn got that gift kind of that we helped, the turf? And it's, it's held up well. Billy's group takes care of it, trying to make sure the rocks and, so they, it's still holding up, doing well and kids use it and, yeah.
Do you vacuum that? Do you vacuum it?
No, you kind of just rake it a little bit.
They rake it.
Checking.
Is this two years' worth that we're going into our second year or our third year?
This is...
Second.
This is the second year.
Going in?
Second summer, yes.
This is the rest of the Siemens Performance Project. LED lighting upgrades at Park Ave, Sherwood and Washburn. We, we did have Walton scheduled to be done as well, but unfortunately, some of the rules with efficiency main changed and we were not able to get rebates on the LED lighting. So, Walton has been dropped from that project. But we'll be looking to add it to next summer's CIP work. So, we'll get it done next summer. But these three schools are in progress.
You did it in Park Ave? They already need replacement lighting, Park Ave?
When we, when we did the performance con- started the performance contract with Siemens, we, Fairview and East Auburn were getting new boilers. And we were looking to upgrade some schools with some lights. So, then there was a change in the contract. And when we did that, we tried to balance all the elementary schools so they all got some part of the project. So, in the four schools that, four elementaries that did not get heating upgrades, we chose to bring the lighting projects there. So, everybody got a little something out of that performance contract at the elementary level.
And those lights would be, would have been twelve years old at this point?
Yeah.
They forget how long it's been already.
And so, the remaining schools will all be done next summer through our CIP bond.
So, these are LED lights and you're not, you shouldn't, we shouldn't have to worry about them for twenty years. And you don't have to worry about ballast and replacing bulbs. This is a one-time change.
Yeah.
So, where the other projects that we did, I believe it was eleven years ago, we're replacing ballast and bulbs from that project now. So, it's, it's served its purpose and, so this is a much better project.
Oh, yeah. They're much better.
The longevity is, is much better here.
There's also significant energy savings in terms of electrical. LEDs are much more efficient.
Wireless upgrade. This is a project that was not done with CIP funds. This was a project that we applied for. We were eligible for eighty percent E-rate funding for what they call category-two projects. So, Peter Robinson and Dave Strowman and I did a lot of brainstorming. And we put out through the E-rate process, a project to upgrade the wireless system in all of our schools. And we were approved for that funding. And New England Communications completed that work this summer. So, the wireless at all of our schools has been upgraded using eighty percent E-rate funding. So, we had to cover twenty percent of the cost. And we did that using E-rate funds that we already had from prior years.
E-rate references what? What's E-rate?
Yes, great question. E-rate is, is the money that comes through the main schools and libraries, network and it's to cover technology items in schools. And traditionally, it's covered telephone costs. That's being phased out. In fact, as of this year, we no longer receive reimbursement for our regular telephone service. Basically, the, the E-rate that's available now is for big projects like this. And because of our free and reduced numbers, et cetera, we were in the eighty percent category. So, we took advantage of that. We may be eligible again this year. So, we're gonna be looking at that again and seeing if there's another project that might make sense.
The, the telephone, we're not network phones at this point? Are they, are they traditional land, land-based or are they network phones that can use the internet?
I'm not really sure the answer to that.
You know, Billy?
We're part of the fiber optic program. That's all I, from building to building, that's really all I know.
If we're tied to the, maybe we can look into it. But if we're tied to the internet, which we are, because that's where we get a lot of our service, the possibility of using the internet for a phone service. So, you, you don't have to have, what would be Verizon.
You should do Warner, like people do with their keyboards.
Right, yeah. I mean, you can do your phones over there.
I don't know if we've ever done that.
It's an option to look at and then...
Yeah. It's something we could definitely discuss.
I think we're now with the city kind of networking. Yeah, it's all interconnected.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, that's something we would have to ask, yeah.
And we need to be sure that we're covered if there is a catastrophe in the school.
That's exactly.
You know, so if the internet goes down, we need to be sure that we have another way to communicate.
Yeah.
There's a grant, the city's working on a grant for all of, and will be included in it for handheld.
Radios.
Radios. Yeah, for that very reason.
Yep. Still to come, these are projects that were budgeted for in last year's CIP that haven't been done yet. So, AMS sprinkler system upgrade, new interior doors and hardware at Park Avenue and Washburn. Walton bathrooms that you see there are ready for an upgrade. Those are, Billy believes those are the original partitions from circa...
Nineteen fifty-four, I think.
Nineteen fifty-four.
And as you can see, it was built for, as a junior high, not an elementary.
Yeah.
Yep. So, they've had to make accommodations for the height on some of those. So, we'll be looking to do those next summer because of the size of the project.
We'll be looking at smaller ones?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
It'll fit the scope of the students using them.
Because that used to be only a ninth-grade school.
Right. Just put a hole in the floor and just let them pee in them because it'll be way easier. They could probably pee all over the whole thing.
They feel like they're on stage.
I guess.
Moving on.
Next time, take pictures of the girls' bathroom if it's possible.
I had those two, but I could only choose one. And those partitions well illustrated the age. So, I went with that one. We're also looking at converting the generator at Park Ave from diesel to natural gas, which would also allow us to get rid of the big diesel tank and all the requirements that go with that. So, that's another thing we'll be looking at potentially for next summer.
And the natural gas comes up Park Ave now?
And what?
So, why didn't we, natural gas comes up Park Avenue?
Yeah, there's natural gas up, well, it doesn't come up Park Avenue. It comes up from the neighborhood behind it.
From where?
From Lake Street.
The neighborhood behind it, Orchard Street and that area.
Okay. And we didn't do that when we were converting before?
No, we did not.
Have we thought of a, because this, was this partially funded, that generator, because of a shelter?
It is our, it is Auburn's only shelter, yes.
And wasn't that partially funded by the Fed, federal government or not?
I'm not sure where, if it was partially funded from something, but I don't know.
I believe because it's a shelter, that there's federal money available. If, if, I'm pretty sure we used it too at, when that was built, for that reason. So, you might investigate that. And the, the alternative, which is kind of a pet thing of mine, as you all know, is a fuel cell instead of a generator of that sort, instead of a natural gas one, a fuel cell. It's greener.
We can look into that.
Very good, too.
I think Tom is right. During the ice storm, I think we used that building as a, as a shelter.
We used Fairview as a shelter.
I was gonna say, was it open at the ice storm?
It didn't exist yet.
Is it a shelter for the city?
How long has Park Avenue been there? We've just had...
Twelve years.
Oh-six. It opened in oh-six.
Time flies.
Oh-six?
Yeah.
The ice storm was twenty years ago.
But I think when it was built, because of the ice storm, they made Park Avenue, yes. So, there is a connection there.
And I'm almost certain there was federal money involved.
Yeah, I'm not sure about the money.
Adding that generator and other, some other facilities.
So, those are all the projects that we got done this summer. So, kudos to Billy and to Mel Cole with Northeast Building Consultants who helped guide us through all of that. And we look forward to doing more projects next summer.
I, I think you guys did a great job. And I think that we've done some good, great things in our system. But I listened, I listened to the city council meeting on Monday night. And we got raked over the coals because Walton was not mowed.
Yes.
On it.
Yes.
So, what's the story? How come?
Uh, it's a staffing issue right now. Currently, two out of my five staff are, are out on long-term. They've had surgery, one had knee surgery, one had hip surgery. And a third one is driving a bus part-time. So, I'm down to two and a half people. So, yes. So, we're looking into a way to clean up all the buildings by the, well, sometime next week to get them all mowed, weed whacked so that they look good for the remainder of the year. And we have some plans that we're looking forward to do a better job next year. So, it's just one of those years that we had.
And I understand that. But to listen to, it was really disheartening.
It came from a constituent. It came from a constituent.
Yes, it did. But it had already been addressed. It had already been addressed.
Being conveyed by a counselor. But if constituents speak up, then, you know, and, but I know that you, there was communication between the city manager and, and all, all of you guys that I believe he offered help if you guys needed it.
I mean, we've never been in this situation staff-wise before. So, it's just, and their, their concerns are legitimate. I understand them. And I agree with them.
It's just an image, it's just an image thing. That's, that's the thing.
And just to be clear, the constituent emailed me, the email was to me with counselor CC'd on it. And I responded to the person that same day. And then the person emailed us today, very pleased that Billy's crew was out there. One person was out there till eight-thirty last night. I explained to Linda Gary today when she saw me that I was at Walton. I was at Walton at that event that happened. And I, I told her I agree that the grass was long there. There's also a major construction going on, on those streets as well, which is not helping matters. And when I went to the front of the school for my school visits, it was in good condition. So, she was picturing, you know, it's all overgrown. It's, it's not, and I said, it, it is not. When I visit schools and see stuff, I call Billy and say, can you help me with what's going on here? The Walton principal knows there's a garden issue. His gardens are very overgrown. They're very hard to care for. So, they have plans for that. So, I appreciate the, the person emailing me and asking me what was going on. And, and he was very kind to write back today and offer to help and support us. So, we appreciate that. And we're, we're going to be getting support. And then we have plans that you'll be hearing about at budget season.
Sometimes our choices are, you know, getting the food to satellite schools and keeping the athletic program rolling is home games where we have to mow those fields and stay up to date on those and, and also line them. So, some days, those are our choices.
It's, it's been a, a struggle year because normally in August, it dries out and things don't grow as fast. And we have not had that happen this year. So, I'm still mowing pretty regularly my lawn. And I'm sure that applies to all lawns in Auburn.
It's been a challenge.
Can, Katie, Billy, can we, we have community service that our students need to do at the high school level. And I realize that there's an age limit that before they can use a machine. But could we see if some of the kids might want to, for their community service that are old enough to mow a lawn?
I think that's part of what we're talking about for the springtime. I think at this point in time of the year with weather is starting to change and it's cooling down, your growing season's gonna be very short now. So, our goal is to just clean them up really quick with the help we can find. And so, they look good for the rest of this fall. And next spring, we're gonna look into something like...
How about adopt a school? Like we have Adopt a Road space? Well, they could do that on Wednesday afternoon. You know, you've got, to me, I'd like to see them do something constructive on a Wednesday afternoon, you know.
What about the city? Don't they do any kind of mowing?
Well, I talked...
They're similar to us. I mean, they, they have their challenges also. You know, they have a lot of areas to mow with.
I just didn't know if there was some give, like if you guys are down some and they have some extra staffing to help.
When I talked to the city manager, they're subcontracting right now for support. So, I'm sure Public Works would love to help us if they had the manpower. I mean, the problem is we're all running the same thing with unemployment rates so low that trying to get people for summer work only, if you don't pay them well, they're just gonna go work somewhere else. So, part of our discussion will be raising the rate for our summer workers. Because we used to get college students that would come, earn some good money. But now they can work somewhere else for, for more than an hour or so. But we can look at different things.
Just for the record though, all, all the buildings that I ever go into, I'm always impressed at how shiny the floors are and how things are really kept up, really, really nice. It's understandable, you know, when you're down a few people or if people are taking vacations and then something happens, there's just so much you can do. So, I think, I would, I think that Bonnie's idea is good in terms of looking at some of the kids. And I, I just think Wednesday afternoon, we've got a lot of kiddos with some time there. And if they're not going to the arena and we open that up for them, why not have them help out and have a little, that would be a good training session for them, you know? Yeah.
The, the, some of the challenges that goes along with that is that you have to get the machines there and you have to have the staff to do that also. So, which is what we're trying to do right now. That's why somebody was mowing late last night. So, we've been moving the machines around and getting people to work different hours and stuff like that. So.
Well, thank you. It's, it's a real hard thing to, I know very well, yeah, from having had my own schools. So, thank you very much. It's really a good job. A lot of good stuff done this summer.
Yeah, excellent.
Thank you, Billy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Adam, well done.
Thanks, Billy.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to the meeting calendar, our school committee meeting calendar, which we have done some work on.
Right. I, I've done this each year, even though I have to tell you, probably after I hand this out, in two weeks, it will change. Okay? So, basically, it's showing you that every first and third Wednesday, you have a meeting, which you already knew. And then there's some agenda items that we have to do at certain times of year. So, more or less, it's just so you have kind of an overview of the year, knowing very well that things change and shift. I talked to the city manager. He and I did not solidify when joint meetings were. I put in there when we had a couple last year on our Wednesdays. What I didn't put in is the Mondays, we did a couple of joint meetings. So, there is gonna be additional meetings when it comes to the city side. I just, Peter and I did not confirm those dates. So, those are gonna be added in. And he knows that. I said I would, I'd be sharing this tonight and let you know that with the city, we need to continue to talk about meetings. The big things are the budget workshops, which I have another, so you notice they're all first and third until you get to February where I start adding more in. That's always the fun time of year when you all have to rest up because it's every Wednesday, starting February twenty-seventh. Look on the back. You come every Wednesday in March. And then we go back to the first and third unless we need more time. So, I just wanted to remind you of the dates, when there's workshops already planned, when, with the budget starts. So, we're kicking off budget really on January second in a workshop to talk about goal-setting and budget priorities that we do each year. So, it's just to outline things for you as we work in. So, the next part of this, so you can tuck this away and know that it's ever-changing. But I wanted to give you at least a snapshot. And then we had a lot of discussion at the last meeting around workshops on PBE, PBL. And so, the chair and I met to discuss a game plan for that. And part of our discussion was that last April twenty-fifth, we had a workshop on PBE. So, we did that in more of a, let's have a discussion, let's talk, let's do some Q and A, that you brought questions. I remember, Dan, you asking me at that meeting, did we have to do the one through four grading? And I said, no, we didn't have to. That was our choice. So, we did have that conversation. So, we looked at maybe a different format about how to get information as a board and have, be able to discuss things. But if we have it on one night, it's a lot to take in. So, we chunked out the areas that when we talk about PBE or PBL, what's tied to that discussion, right? So, I'm gonna hand that out to you. And I'm gonna go through what I put together. I did share this with administrators on Tuesday for their feedback as well. And then there should be some extras. Some more? I will come with you.
She needs another one, I guess.
We'll share.
Terrible on the split there.
Is it the same thing as you?
All right, we're good.
Okay. So, first thing I, on this paper that I wanted to remind, remind us is we have a school committee goal. have a school committee goal. So, remember when we did our goals and set our goals? One of your goals is to, to support the implementation of proficiency-based education within a framework of accountability. So, this is one of our goals we're working on. One is accountability, that each time that we do our universal screening, Sue Doris comes and she tells you about our data, and so you will be, if you look on your calendar, you'll see that as of right now, she's scheduled to do that on October seventeenth. Now, that's all if MEAs come out as they're planned and so forth, so the universal data for us will be available, but whether MEA data will be available, it's supposed to be released in the beginning of October for us to review, and then a turnaround. Now, I don't know for sure, but that's what they're telling us. So, we're hoping on the seventeenth that we'll have that data review, but every, last year, you had data three times last year, and it'll be good as we do the fall, want to think about budget items that we might want to consider as we review that data. The second part of that goal is the proficiency-based diploma work, and so annually, you were reviewing the proficiency-based diploma plan that was outlined in our extension plan. So, when the law first came in effect, Auburn took the farthest-out extension, did a whole plan, and every year, Shelley has talked to you about that plan and how we've implemented. Now, with the change in the law, that has shifted some things, so that, and I'm telling you all this because it plays into why we, the chair and I planned what we planned. Then the third one is that the PE PG process, which is annually, you review the PE PG plan, remember, that's the teacher effectiveness, the Marzano work, to assess impact on teacher effectiveness, includes data on teacher effective in regards to Marzano and phases of customized learning. So, Michelle, last year, came, I think twice, and shared that work with us. So, those are part of your goals currently. The other thing that I, people say, "Well, are you in favor of PBE?" And sometimes I ask, "Well, when you say PBE, what do you mean? What, what are you thinking when you say that?" Because for different people, it may mean different reasons. So, when we were talking it through with administrators, we looked at the Maine Curriculum Leaders Association, which is an association that all the curriculum directors in Maine participate in, and so they've given some key aspects of proficiency-based education, which I thought were important, as a lens for the workshops we put together in regards to your goals and what we've been hearing from the public. I'm going to read it out loud, only because people watching can hear what we're doing. A learner-centered, so one is a learner-centered culture that enables and supports clear student learning targets, evidence collection, and intentional instruction. Number two, transparent learning targets with an appropriate level of rigor. Number three, evidence of rigorous learning collected and fairly evaluated. Number four, instruction intentionally designed to support learners to reach targets. So, it's all about that learner-centered culture, our learning targets being transparent, raising the rigor, and then assessing students on that rigor. Okay? And you can go to their website, Maine Curriculum Leaders Association, and you can read more of their work. So, across the state, people are talking about this. This is not Auburn, it's the state, okay, as we, as we work on this. So, we've outlined three workshops. The first one would start on October third, and it will be focused on grading and reporting. The purpose of this workshop, and we do have an hour, and we're going to try to make sure there's time for you to also ask questions, dialogue, okay, about the information you're receiving. So, it's going to update you on the implementation, implementation of the new grading guidelines to understand requirements to earn course credit, so we'll go over that again, what, what is it taking for students to earn credit? To understand the use of Power School, which I think what Mary brought up tonight, to, to see what Power School's going to look like, well, it currently looks like, and is building on. To understand the use of Empower, so having some pre-K six teachers explain to you how they're using Empower to track their targets, and to understand the mapping and assessment of learning targets. So, understanding that curriculum, how are they implementing that curriculum, what does it look like for the teachers, the grade levels, the courses? So, that will be that workshop, and you can ask questions about that.
Bonnie?
Katie?
Yes.
Just so that we understand, Empower, we kept, it was not part of our task force to, for the K to six.
Correct.
So, we kept Empower for the K to six, or pre-K to six, because it had some special perks in it that the teachers liked on it.
Right.
So, we kept Empower for pre-K to six, and we did Power School as a result of the task force from seven to twelve.
Correct.
So, I'm sorry, we do have Empower there.
Yes. Now, what you're going to learn at that workshop is parents aren't seeing Empower at pre-K six. It's mostly, the teachers are using it to guide their lesson design, their lesson plans, their data, and there were teachers last year ready to pilot rolling it out to parents in a reporting way. We have not gotten there yet, so Shelley, during that time, will have elementary principals, elementary teachers talk to you about how they are using it currently, and what the hopes are in the future in the way they use it, okay? The second workshop will be about Vision 2030 and graduation policy. So, it directly feeds into, I'm often asked, "Well, are we doing credits now? Are we..." Yes, we are doing credits. That's a shift from just being a proficiency-based diploma. So, our graduation policy needs to be reviewed based on our changes, and based on the law changes, what are things that we can be flexible in our graduation policy? Vision 2030 had a reboot, the administrators saw it on Tuesday, they will be seeing it again next Tuesday to roll out to their staff, and then they're being asked to share it at their PTO meetings, and then you will see it on this date. What, what we really did through all the feedback last year is par it down, is, a lot of the feedback was, "This vision is very wordy and very jargony, can you pare it down?" So, that's, that's a lot of what the change was. So, the purpose of that workshop will be to review and give feedback to the reboot, reboot of Vision 2020 to Vision 2030, to understand the changes to the proficiency-based diploma law and its impact on the graduation policy, and to review and give feedback to the graduation policy based on the information from the grading and reporting workshop. So, that policy will be going through review, we're meeting next week, because Michelle had that, to start looking at what other districts' policies are looking like at this point, what impact our new grading guidelines is going to make, and then that's going to run through the graduation, the policy committee. So, board members on the policy committee will see that before the seventeenth, so that you will see a first draft of what we're looking for, and then you can give feedback on that before first reading. So, this workshop is done in prep for first readings of the Vision 2020. So, you'll see on your calendar, okay, we're doing a workshop on the seventeenth, and then in November, there'll be a first reading on the Vision and the graduation policy, and then there'll be a second reading. So, this gives you ample time to ask us questions, anything that you need for more information before you take your vote on the Vision and the graduation policy. Okay? All right, so far, so good? Okay. The last workshop is around the performance evaluation and professional growth. So, we're getting a lot of questions on, "Why did we go with Marzano? How does Marzano connect with our work? What are the regulations?" What, because there is a law with PBE, there is another law that people aren't talking a lot about, but is getting more, which is, there's a teacher effectiveness law that we're required to do. So, Michelle is going to review that again, what's in the law, so you'll see bullet number one, review the law and what's the requirements, to understand the role of the steering committee. So, we have a steering committee made up of the educators, talking about the implementation of our Marzano framework. We're going to talk to you about the steps that we've been using with implementation, have our educators come and talk to you about what they've been experiencing as educators in this model. And then we wanted to also include, how is that connected to when we hear the words "customized learning"? So, part of what we've been talking about is having a couple of new teachers come talk to you about boot camp. What do you learn at boot camp when you join the Auburn School Department about customized learning? So, they can tell you it's really about creating a learner culture for learning. So, part of that is what's customized learning, how's it connected to Marzano's framework, that's part of that workshop, so that you, everybody can hear, how are all these pieces connected that we term PBE, PBL? Okay? And as you saw, Alfred, I don't want you to miss this, in December, we're going to do a special education programming workshop, because I know that's important as we get for budget season. So, is there anything we missed as we talked about what we've been hearing? Is there any other information you're hoping we're going to capture in those three workshops? And we can always add information, I mean, as we go through them.
I, I just, and I've told you this before, I've spoken to you before about it, I just want to be sure that we can dialogue in these workshops, that we're not going to have presentations all the time, but that we can dialogue between ourselves and the presenters if we need to, so that we've workshopped this and gotten all our questions on the table.
It, it would be helpful, Pat, go ahead.
Well, I'm just thinking off the top of my head, if teachers are going to come in and tell us what they're doing, when it's pertinent, could they bring some students?
Yes, I can talk to them about that, yes.
I mean, I think it's, it's, I mean, we had students here in the spring, and I appreciated their feedback, so I think if we could get them to come and, and maybe demonstrate some of the things, when you hear these words, it's like, "Well, okay, this is all great, but what does it mean when you sit in the classroom? What do I do as a student in the classroom that is different from what my parents did?"
Yes.
Maybe we could do a little, I don't know if there's time, but anyway.
Well, no, but we're going to talk, like at the high school, who might do a presentation, so they could ask, they could solicit students to do that, yes.
That would be helpful.
Especially at the high school.
How come there are not student representatives here tonight?
They play field hockey, so whether they could get here or not, I'm not sure. They are also upperclassmen, and most of the impact is to our freshmen, sophomore, seventh, eighth, seventh, eighth, ninth, and tenth graders. Like today, I went to the middle school and asked, I went, I purposely did this today, I went into the eighth grade, one eighth grade team, and I asked the students, "So, how's Power School going?" "Oh, we love Power School, now we can see our things. Are you still learning about targets?" "Oh, yeah, we know our targets, we're still working on our targets," and, and so that's important. So, I think the kids are seeing the balance of that, the voice, but we can make sure we get, we, they could see if they can get some students to be brave enough to come in, and maybe in the student leadership, we can talk to Craig Gibson, the student leadership, there may be some students in that as well, so. Well, we're working to get the voices at the table, knowing we only have an hour, so we want to make sure you're getting some good chunks and good time to talk.
Can we go a half an hour earlier? Can we go at five, so that we, presentations are great, Shelley does a great job, and all the other teachers do a great job, but I want to be sure that we can dialogue. So, if we have to come at five, whoever can...
That, that's up to you all. I, I put six, because I don't know what your schedules are.
Or five-thirty even, then, if you put six.
Do you want to try five-thirty?
We already do that with the city, too, so that would be, so five-thirty.
Okay, so, let's try, Bob, five-thirty? Can you do five-thirty, Bob?
Six o'clock would be better, but that's okay.
You want to try the first one, five-thirty, and see how we do? Jenna?
All depends on the day.
So, you'll do your best to be here.
I will do my best to be here.
Okay?
I will be here as close second as five-thirty.
I will be here. Mom?
Yep.
Dan? So, let's see how we do. If everyone doesn't come until six, then we'll know six is a better time. Okay, so we'll shoot for five-thirty, see how many are people, because I hate to do it, and half of you missed the information, too.
Great, is there, so we can't start our meeting at seven-thirty, right?
We could.
Just because I coached two soccer teams on Wednesdays, so...
That's another thing, is that on these three nights, we could push things to seven-thirty.
I would, that would work better for me, because it's already, six o'clock is already pushing it for me.
So, the presentations could be like six to six forty-five, and then you have dialogue time.
Seven-thirty.
So that teachers don't have to, you know what I'm saying?
Right.
Because I try to be sensitive that, to that as well. So, why don't we say, you know, six to seven will be the bulk, and then between, we could, you know, say that our regular meeting will start at seven-thirty, okay? How do people feel about that? And I'm going to try to limit how much goes on during the regular meeting, so you don't feel like, "Well, am I going to be..."
Yeah, so, the later the start, the later will be done.
Exactly, but I'll try to limit how much I put in there for big items, for those three nights. Let's try it. Let's try it, the first one, like Pat said, we're going to go for October third, six o'clock with a seven-thirty regular time. See how that works, and then decide.
I think it would help in that discussion to promote the dialogue, if you think about questions that you might have or want brought, to have brought up during those sessions, particular to the topics being discussed, take the time to make notes of that, so that you're not trying to think of them during the meeting, that you've become prepared, ready to enter into the dialogue. So, it'd be helpful to move things along.
Okay, good. Any other feedback? I don't want to, I want to make sure, if it's, if it's something that you don't think's going to work for you, I need to hear that. If it's something that, "Ooh, I was hoping you were going to cover X." Okay. And as we work through, you might say, "Ooh, let's do a workshop on this, later date." Okay. All right.
Great, moving on.
Thank you very much.
The school physician's contract, we need to approve.
So, this has been, every, every year, annually, you approve this, so it's part of educational policy, Title 20, I think it's on there, but the, each year in our school improvement, every year, I have to certify everything for all of our schools, and one of them is that you have a school physician that oversees you. It, it is in law, and so we do have to approve this, and it's just helpful to have somebody, if we have a case of something, our nurses can call this doctor and say, "Am I on the right track on that?" So, it's, it's good to have her available. She has been our physician for as long as I can remember right now, so we were thankful she's going to stay with us, and the contract has been five thousand dollars each year for at least the last seven years, as long as I can remember as well. So, it's pretty general, the lawyers put it together, the major things are the things in that first page that were in red, those are really the roles and responsibilities of the work they're going to do, so.
Do we have to go out to bid?
No.
No, not...
No, it's, it's like a contracted services, service.
No.
Entertainer motion to approve the school physician's contract as presented.
I'm moved.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Questions? All those in favor? Thank you very much. Finance report.
Faith and I are going to share this report tonight.
Aye.
I think Faith should just do it. No, I think Bonnie is much better.
Actually, we met on Monday morning, we have a designated time at eleven o'clock on the Monday before this meeting, the second meeting of the month, to review the finances on it. We pretty much scrutinized everything along, we have asked many questions. Adam is losing his hair as, as we go along here, because we...
I had much more before I met you, Bonnie.
I know you did, I know, I know. So, we reviewed it, we are at seventeen percent of the revenue has come in already for us, so that's a good sign for us, so we've done that. Our expenses are a little bit higher, they're the twenty-four percent, I think they are? Faith? I think we're at twenty-four percent on it.
Shy of that, I think.
Yeah, just shy of the twenty-four percent. So, everything, this is only really the first month that the school has been in, only the third week, so everything looks pretty good. We've gotten revenue in, we've done some expenses, we've bought our books, we've bought our programs, we've done all that good stuff that we do as school departments, so we've, we've done a lot with it. We've had a good summer, the childcare had a good summer, they're doing well. Paula at the Food Services, she's had a great summer, so we've done well there, too, in revenue and expenses. Faith, what would you like to add? So, we're, we're doing pretty good here, and it, I highly recommend to the city that we, everybody should have a finance committee, because we scrutinize, we know what's going on pretty well, so that's... We've been talking about that.
Yes, yes, you know, Titus has been...
Yes, yes. So, Faith, you have anything to add?
No, I think, I don't know if we should explain why your expenses are at twenty-four percent, because we had to pay upfront. I forget, Adam, if you can explain that better than I can?
Yeah, I was actually, when you said that number, that didn't sound right, so I looked, it's at twelve percent.
Twelve, right, I saw that, yeah.
Which is right about where it should be.
It sounded right to me, but it's doubled.
Yeah.
But for coming in so early this school year...
But thanks for making me check it.
That's why he has no hair.
In the, in the two summer months, the majority of what we're spending is supply and textbook and equipment orders, as well as salaries for those people that work year round. As we get into September, we start paying our teacher ed tech and secretary salaries, and so once we get through the month of September, that's when we can really start to take stock of how are our salary and benefits looking compared to what we budgeted, and other things like special ed... And other things like special ed out of district tuition, how is that looking? So about a month from now, we'll be starting to get a better handle on how things are looking for this year. But we're really just at the very beginning at this point.
So Adam, did we have to balance out accounts this year?
Talking about for FY '18?
Yes.
Yes, so I was going to mention FY '18. Our audit was just completed last week. We're now reviewing the financial statements. But at this moment in time, for FY '18, it looks like we under expended our total budget by about $875,000, or about 2% of our budget, which is good news. And our projected fund balance at June 30th is about $1.9 million. We've already designated $719,000 of that toward next year's budget, as you remember, in the budget process. So that would project our undesignated fund balance to be at about $1.2 million, which represents 2.77% of our FY '19 budget. So we're making strides, but we're still below 3%, which is the number that the state puts out there as a cap on, on designated fund balance. So we're working toward getting up to 3% and then we'll take it from there. So to answer Bonnie's question, yes, we had three budget categories where we did over expend the category last year. Special education, as you knew about, transportation, and system administration. So next, at our next meeting, I'm going to bring those numbers to you. And the board will need to vote to do a transfer from other cost centers, which typically is just taking some out of what was left in regular instruction to cover those other three. Doesn't affect the bottom line, but it's a vote that we do have to take and record each year. So I'll have those numbers for you coming into your next meeting.
Any questions? People understand that, we do that every year? Is there any?
That's the way it should be done, so that you can see where you've gone over and all of that. Are you anticipating next year, the same thing will happen again in each of those similar lines, as far as the overage?
It's too early to tell if any of those categories might go over at this point.
And, and can you tell at this point what pushed it? Especially it is clear, clearly, I mean, I can understand that, the other two areas.
Yes, the other two, and I'll have, I'll get you the numbers and some explanation prior to the meeting.
Appreciate that.
In general, the system administration was due to staff turnover and retirements. And the transportation was due to two extra school bus purchases that we made once the DOE gave us approval. When we brought our transportation back in-house, they approved us for two more buses. And so we were able to purchase those, but it did push the transportation line over by just a little bit.
But you get reimbursed for the buses?
We're getting reimbursed for those this year.
But you'll see it on the 279.
Yeah. The 279 report from the DOE for this year, you can see that reimbursement coming in.
And that's actually a good thing, that it was the buses that drove us over in the transportation, because we had been watching the transportation line.
Yes.
To see how we were going to do.
That's a great point, Bonnie. We were, obviously, we brought the transportation back in-house, but we had created the budget using a contracted basis. So we weren't exactly sure how that would play out. It played out very well in our favor, such that even with buying two new school buses at $95,000 apiece, we only went over by a little bit. I would say it was about $10,000 in that line. So the work, the transportation.
You're not talking about going over by millions?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, go ahead, Pat.
We talked about some of the projects that were not completed. Now, is that funding coming? Tell me how you account for that.
Yep, so the, the projects that we looked at tonight were completed with the F, what we call the FY '18 CIP money. That would be the money that was approved a year ago. And so the four projects that were shown as still to come will be covered by that, by those funds. We still have those funds available to cover those.
So they don't cut them off or do something?
Correct. Once, once those funds are approved, we have those available to complete the projects. And then the projects that are slated for next summer will be covered by the new CIP money that was approved this spring.
A year off.
Any further questions on the finance report? Entertainer motion to approve the finance report is presented. Thank you, a second.
No, it's a, whichever.
All those in favor? Very much. Standing committees, we've had the finance report. Alfreda, have we got information from the city council that we need to be updated on related to the schools?
I do, and well, it's not, some of it is directly related to the schools, but it's just an update from the city council, just to let, now go as fast as I can. I'm just going to mention streetlights, you know, if anybody out there wishes to have streetlights. I know I mentioned it last time, but they're extending their deadline from September 24th to a little bit later. So all you have to do is either call Liz Allen or, or go to, there's a website that you can go to. It has to do with auburnmain.gov/pages/neighborhood. The minute you put neighborhood, it'll come in. So if you do want that, just, just call Liz Allen, she'll tell you all about it. There was an Ag Zone study that, that took place by a commission, and it's been a lot of brouhaha about that, because at the end, there, there were no decisions made. But that commission was never charged with making decisions. It was just charged with making recommendations. So we are putting together some plan, a plan to, to resolve those issues. And it has to do with, with the Ag Zone itself. And I tabled, you know, what we were talking about last, on Monday night, because we were getting, there was another offer of another plan. But we don't, you don't take a plan and get it there that night and, and look at it and decide to make a decision on it. You have to, you can't do that. So we're going to be discussing it again at the next meeting, October 1st, I think it is. And we're going to take a look at, you know, what the model will be. But we'd like to get that, you know, resolved. And there are a couple of items that were recommended by the commission that, that could easily be resolved, so to, to start out with. But we were looking at possibly having a commission in charge of that as well down the road. The strategic plan has something to do with what we talked about here in terms of the calendar, and I didn't say anything at that time. But when, for this, we were presented with a strategic plan, not the plan itself, but a plan for the plan. The three major areas are growth, quality, and investment. And we want to work with, with schools as well on this. This stems from the comprehensive plan. It was, the deadline is 2010, so it was written about eight years, eight and a half years ago. But there were two, we looked at those that were completed, those that are ongoing, and those that are not even addressed yet, or those perhaps that will, don't, don't need to be addressed. It all depends. But we'd like to clean that up. And that would present the work that we need for the next comprehension plan and, and study, as well as this strategic planning. But in the strategic planning, there were 207 items that were identified within that comprehensive plan, the 2010 one. And two of them that have, there that we, we need to work with you on is, one was develop a child-centered facility plan. And there's a lot of stuff that goes with it, so we'd have to refer to that. And also, a second thing was to improve quality of the city's school system and certainly working on that. But I think it'd be nice for us to just have dialogue going back and forth. So this might be something that we might want to use as a topic for joint meeting. Mike's Runway Diner is open if you guys want to go for a new place for breakfast or for lunch. And they got their liquor license approved. And they're open most days, just every day of the week, roughly around 6:00, 6:30 to around 2:00, 2:30. The Torrey Street, there was discussion about Torrey Street discontinuation, but that was changed. There will be a two-way street. There's a new plan that was, that we approved, so that it would make for a better flow. And it actually gives one of the, a butters a little more room himself for his parking. Memorial Day Parade, we've got, you know, a little, you know, template here that we're probably going to use, maybe refine. But we're going to send this to everybody who we can think of to see if they're willing to participate in the parade, and it gives them all the information they need. And if you do want to find out any information about the whole 150th, just go to auburn150.com, auburn150.com. Age-friendly is really being worked over right now. We're really trying to get something up and started at the, the Hasty Memorial Omery, the building next to it. And there will be an event, I, I passed out some events, an event that's taking place on the 29th, from 12 to 2 is free hot dogs and free all that stuff. Yes, thank you very much for doing that, because I didn't keep myself one. But prior to that, that same day, from 8:00 in the morning to noon, will be a combined neighborhood watch meeting for all the neighborhoods. And it's going to be run by the Auburn Police Department, where they're going to do some stuff having to do with, you know, crime-free lifestyle and, and livability, law enforcement. So it's going to be a nice learning and, and safety type of thing going on. So that whole morning on Saturday from, you know, 8:00 until 2:00 will be pretty busy.
And if people want to take a break from that, at one point, they can go to Wallingford's for Park Avenue's Harvest Fest. Is that Wallingford's that same day?
I'm going with the Community Credit Union.
Perfect.
I think it's on the same day and it's in the morning.
Right, exactly.
But I go in the morning.
But you go in the morning and get, you know, your apples and then go to the.
Get my pie.
Get your hot dog, get your hot dog at noon. I mean, you're set.
That whole, that whole day is, is.
There should be a bean supper someplace for.
Sure, there is.
Oh, goodness. Oh, goodness, yeah. A bunch, a few of us, Leroy and Belinda and I, and let me see who else. Oh, yes, Sabrina Best. We all went, attended a, a main summit on aging, which is called the Wisdom Summit. And that was all day long last, a day last week, and it was outstanding. We got a lot of great ideas. So we're, we're starting to get, to get going on that. The things that's left to, to do with this project is committee appointments, changing this ad hoc status to a standing committee. And the last thing would be to start the process of renaming the building, because the building says senior center or something like that. But we've got the policy on naming, on naming a building. So those are the three things we'll be working on right now. And there's only one more thing. If anybody's interested in attending any senior-type forum, there's a free forum in Freeport. I didn't do that on purpose. On Thursday, October 4th, at the Hilton Garden Inn. And it is free, and it's for anybody who's interested in, in that topic. So I believe that's it.
Alfreda, somebody asked me, what is being built out between, on the way to Whiting Farm, going out Summer Street? What is that big building being built?
I have no idea.
You know what it is?
Yes.
What is it?
It's not.
Somebody asked me.
Oh, it's either a assisted living or nursing home.
Okay, that's.
Oh, Margaret Murphy. Is that right?
Margaret Murphy?
No, I'm sorry. It's, it's.
John Murphy?
John Murphy.
So for an older, the older adults population?
Yeah, the big.
So it's Whiting Farm.
On Summer Street, on the right-hand side, if you're going towards Whiting Farm.
Is that, that, what? So, so it's connected to whatever's going on at Whiting Farm, maybe the John F. Murphy homes?
I don't recall.
Yeah, right after Mayfield. It's a big project.
There's a discussion about that.
It's a big.
Somebody had asked me and I thought.
Oh, I asked the code enforcing.
Yeah, Shelley, you asked me. It was Shelley who asked me. She goes, do you know if that's been mentioned? I said, no idea.
Is it on the same side as Whiting or on the other?
Okay, yeah, sorry, sorry.
It's way back further in town.
Oh, okay.
Margaret Murphy is also.
Yeah, I didn't say I mean to say Margaret Murphy. Bob's getting impatient.
Do you want me to tell you?
Yeah.
Are we winning? That's all that matters.
Yay!
We're not winning, Rob.
It don't matter, we got 12 more games. All we have to do is win one.
Margaret Murphy, Margaret Murphy has also bought the.
Already printed the banner and lost it.
Three to nothing.
Margaret Murphy has also bought the place right behind McDonald's on Minut Avenue. So that'll be a new Margaret Murphy facility there.
Where that daycare was?
It's behind the daycare, behind McDonald's. They bought.
Oh, they bought Hyland Carpet. I was wondering what was going there.
Yes. And the other thing is that we need to be aware of is that Minut Avenue's workforce housing did get approved. So that is going to have construction there pretty soon.
Right past Fairview?
Yeah, right between that and Subway and Ruppers. All right. I believe the new EL building committee meets next week.
Can I ask a question about that?
Yes, you may.
Are the subcommittees meeting first? Because it's not on any paperwork that I've seen.
No, because we're going to, oh, sorry, Tom, I didn't mean to step in. I tend to jump in, I'm sorry. Okay. Because part of it is, at the next meeting, we're going to talk about what those committees really need to solidify so that they can jumpstart them again on, because Harriman now needs to meet with each committee to really hammer out what it's going to look like. So no, they will not, because they're getting information, more instruction.
Katie, I heard that we were going to have a curriculum committee for the curriculum of the new high school.
Where'd you hear that?
Online, online. Well, that's interesting. At this point, no. Because we have, because we have a curriculum for the. We have it, well, you have, you, you did the Ed specs. Right. That's the programming. So now it's actualizing that. So there may be a group that needs to get, there will be a group that's going to plan out the space as they allocate, because I have to remind people, state gave us, the state tells you how many classrooms, how much square footage. So as they lay that out, there'll probably be a group of educators at EL and students looking at that design. So that might be where maybe.
No, it was a specific curriculum committee that was going to be formed to produce the curriculum for the new high school.
No. Not that we're aware.
Nope. Audit Subcommittee?
We met on Friday. Faith, Andy Titus, Bob Hayes and myself were the four on the audit committee. We need a fifth person from the community. So if there's somebody out there that would like to be part of the community, part of the audit committee.
You have someone.
We do? When? I didn't, I have some. Okay, that's fine.
Yeah, remember he was coming to your next meeting?
But we didn't know where the next meeting was.
Right. So we have a fifth person, that's a good thing. All right, so the audit committee met. We have a few issues that we'll share with you later on. And we're going to probably have the auditor come back in November for a presentation at some point.
It's a joint meeting.
Well, if you remember, last year, we had the audit guys come in and do us a presentation. And then we waited until January for the joint committee, joint meeting, which really wasn't a joint meeting for us.
So we'll talk that through.
Yeah.
Share Center?
Oh, I'm excited, because I finally went to a Share Center meeting. I'm pretty excited. I had used it very, not very often when I was working. But Lisa Rodriguez out there is extremely excited about the whole idea and the concept. And she's a real workaholic. So she works really, really hard to get, if you don't know what it is, it's businesses and people in the community to donate things that would be thrown out or, or that could be recycled into our schools. And she liked the pen, okay. I know I had, I had things in the library that my, we could get from Share Center. And she has numerous school departments who pay in every year. And so all of their teachers can go in and take this stuff for free. They do have some problems, however, as all nonprofit shoestring kind of organizations do have. They have two separate storage units outside of where, they're located right now on Industry Avenue in the maintenance facility that belongs to the school department. They're very thankful for being allowed to use that. But their storage unit in Turner is not going to be available by the end of the year. And they also have a huge piece or, or location in the Bates Mill where they do most of their paper. So they're looking for an alternative for the first storage unit. Lisa has called all over town looking for donated space, and she's come up with nothing. So she's working on the possibility of getting a pod put in there, but that's not finalized.
What is this?
She also asked me to tell you that she's going to ask this every month. Are people listening to me?
Yes, I'm listening. I'm listening. I'm listening.
Okay.
Looking for storage.
They're looking for storage. And she really would like a truck, and she would like a, a visible space, like a storefront. So if anybody has any inclination to help her out with that, that's great. So, if anybody has any inclination to help her out with that, that's great. But I was really impressed with what they do.
No, if you haven't been to it, you should go. There's a lot of things. I've gotten Christmas presents up there before.
I use it over Christmas. I allow the public in.
Oh, okay.
So, that's something you could talk about. Is the public allowed?
I don't, I don't think so.
I thought they did at one point.
Well, she said they...
Oh.
Taxpayer, you're not allowed to go by, you know, just...
Oh, okay.
So, when, when did you hear that? Because I know, I've used it for many years.
No, I, they told me that themselves.
Okay. So, we can check in on that.
Yeah, because I don't think that, the teachers don't pay for anything that they get there. It's all free.
The school does, though.
But she's right, they used to allow public to come in and do some stuff, yeah. I do remember that. But so, when it changed...
When it was at Community Little Theater, is that where you went? Do you remember?
No, we're at the recreation field now.
Oh. So, we'll check on that. We'll check on that.
I can ask her, I can...
Michelle can look into it, too.
You want me to do it, or do you want to do it?
I can do it.
Okay. Yeah, check in as a board, you know, as checking in on, yeah. We'll check in on it.
We meet again on October 2nd.
There may be a reason for it, and we just don't know. I don't, yeah. All right. Thank you, Pat, for that report.
Yes, Pat.
It was excellent, wasn't it?
It was, it was very engaging.
Comprehensive and thorough.
I mean, you have Bob here, you know, very anxious for his baseball game.
We're getting there.
I see.
Negotiations has not met. We will be starting negotiations for the teacher's contract. That, we have a preliminary meeting, I believe it's October 16.
It's on the calendar. Yes, for the team.
Yeah, for the team to meet.
And we're going to talk about it on November 7th in executive session, yes.
Okay. Upcoming meetings, we have October 3rd at now 7:30 with a workshop at 6:00. And two weeks from there, on the 17th, again, we will repeat the workshop at 6:00 and probably the meeting at 7:30 if it worked out on 3rd. Future agenda items like Katie or I know, we don't need an executive session this evening. So, Bob, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?